Let me welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Just before we go into our regularly scheduled agendas, we will acknowledge the employee of the month. I'm going to ask that those councils who desire, we're going to come down and make our presentation at this time. Our employee of the month is Mr. Kenneth Claypool. You'll come down. Kenneth began his employment journey with the city of Muskogee in November 2012, where he started as a maintenance worker one in the water distribution division. In December 2013, Kenneth transferred from the water distribution division to the city clerk revenue department as a water service technician. He was then promoted to utility field technician two, his current position, in June 2018. Kenneth was nominated for being friendly, courteous, and respectful to others. Kenneth always goes above and beyond to try to help other employees when they need help. He carries the city logo with pride and strives to make Muskogee great. This is the second employee of the month award that Kenneth has received during his tenure with the city of Muskogee. He was also awarded employee of the month for June 2016. Kenneth is a graduate of Muskogee High School and currently resides in Muskogee with his family. When he is not keeping busy with his lawn mowing business, you can find him customizing cars. Congratulations to Kenneth for being named September 2020 employee of the month. I have personally come to know Kenneth over the years that I've been in Muskogee and certainly appreciate everything that he does and just for him being a very decent human being. Help me and congratulate him, Mr. Kenneth Claypool. Kenneth, before you leave, I hope I pronounced everything about you correctly because I forgot my glasses on the Diaz. So, okay, all right. We'll now call to order the special call agenda for the Muskogee Parking Authority for September 14th, 2020. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Item number one.
Approval of minutes, special call parking authority, June 22nd, 2020.
All of us have had an opportunity to read the minutes. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two.
Consider and take possible action to waive fees associated with parking in city lots during the course of the declared emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic or take other necessary action.
Councilor Van.
In July 2020, the authority voted to waive city fees charged to VA employees who park in municipal lots during the course of the COVID-19 pandemic for the months of April, May, and June at a cost to the city of approximately $3,750 per month. Trustee Van is proposing the continued waiver of these fees through the end of the COVID-19 pandemic. If the authority so wishes, it would be expedient to allow contracts to waive billing and apply any payments received as credits on the accounts of individual renters.
Yes, I brought this item back to the agenda. It's over at the end of September, so I thought we'd get a head start on it so we don't forget. And I believe that we ought to allow the VA not to charge them for parking over to our, on our city lots, at least until next year, until they go back to work. That is my proposal to this council.
All right, we've heard from Councilor Van. Do we have any other discussion or motion to that effect?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion from the council at this time? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
No.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
No.
Alex Reynolds.
No.
Evelyn Hibbs.
No.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
No. That will conclude the agenda for the Muskogee Parking Authority. We will now move on to the... Sorry, what?
Your motion failed.
The motion failed. Thank you. We will now move on to the Muskogee Municipal Authority meeting for September 14th, 2020. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Item number one.
Approval of MMA minutes, August 10th, 2020.
We've had an opportunity to review the minutes. Do we have any discussion from the council or motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending August 31, 2020.
We've had an opportunity to review the claims. Do we have a report from Mr. Miller or any questions from the council?
I have a question. Who is this restaurant group?
So, the, what you have before you are the usual claims from MMA. Also, there are claims when we have businesses that are owned by city council members, they come before this body for approval and that is what those are for. Those are for downtown grants. I believe there were some facade grants as well as may have been a business incentive grant. I can go back and double check, but there definitely were some facade grants as part of those.
Were these grants that were awarded?
Yes, these are grants that were awarded actually almost two years ago probably during the, as you remember, our downtown grant was a three-year grant phased in multi-years. So, we filled up the grant applications for the facade grants in the very first year. We're now entering the third year of the grant, so these are grants that were applied for several years ago.
Can we possibly get the documentation on those grants before we move forward with this item? I don't think it'll kill anything tonight if we delayed it a week.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Is that fine with the council?
Yes.
Do we need a motion, Mr. Tucker?
You can take no action.
We'll take no action.
Yes, and we can bring it back at the, at the next regular scheduled MMA meeting. I don't know that there's a need to have a special call.
That'll be fine with me, but it's fine with the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to that item on tonight? That will conclude the MMA meeting. We will now call to order the Muskogee City Council meeting for September 14th, 2020. We will have the invocation by Councilor Ivory Van, followed by the flag salute. Stand.
Move by our heads, please. O'Healy, most gracious Father, this evening, O'Healy, Lord, order our steps in your grace, O'Healy God. Please, O'Healy Father, just keep our city safe, O'Healy God, and all through the world, O'Healy Father. This virus is running rapid and it's running rapid right here in Oklahoma and in our city. And Lord, just bless all our city employees, help them on their jobs, O'Healy God, help them not to get this disease. Bless our council up here, O'Healy Lord, help us, keep us safe, O'Healy Father, just to bless all our citizens and bless all the people in the world, O'Healy Lord. And Lord, bless our governor and help him, O'Healy Father, to make your right decisions. Help the President of the United States, Lord, guide him. Please help him, O'Healy Lord, to make the right decisions. That has to do with us. And, O'Healy, we just thank you for your grace and your mercy and the sunshine today and the beautiful day that we spent outside, for we ask all these blessings in your name for your sake. Amen.
Amen. Join us in the flag salute. Attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've had an opportunity, I hope, to approve the minutes.
Move for approval.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Now, we've had an opportunity hopefully to review the minutes from the special call city council of August 17, 2020, and city council regular session for August 24, 2020. Do we have any action from the council?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number one.
Receive report on the COVID-19 pandemic in Muskogee, and if necessary, take appropriate action to authorize and approve a subsequent amendment to resolution number 2801, declaring a local emergency, or city-county joint resolution number 2803.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you know, you've probably been following along, we do have new, some new numbers today, and what we see is our highest active case total that we've, that we've seen, I believe about 130 active cases in the city of Muskogee. We're going to have Tyler come give you a full update based off of emergency management notes as well as information from the city. One thing we're also adding and making sure is part of this discussion, we've, as pointed out in the last few council meetings, there are, there's additional data now available from the federal government, and we're making sure we report on those as well. Sometimes when the federal government sees as red, the state sees as orange, but we want to make sure that all that information is presented and available to you. Those reports are coming out on Sundays. We have not been able to get the, after, we've had multiple conversations with the State Health Department today trying to get yesterday's report. We do have the one from, from the sixth, which is a week, a week old, from the White House Task Force on the coronavirus. So, without, without any further from me, I want to bring Tyler Evans forward, our emergency manager, and he's going to give you a little bit of an update. I know we'll have others as well, including Doug from the Health Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If any of you's your packet, and the first portion of the packet is information that you guys are used to seeing over the last couple of months. As Mr. Miller stated, we're up to 130 active cases here in the city of Muskogee. Two weeks ago, we were at 97. If you turn your page over, you can see the chart and the line graph that reflects the data on the first page. Since August 17th, we've steadily been going up on the number of active cases here in the city of Muskogee. If you flip the page again, there is the COVID-19 tracker system from the coronavirus website that has the counties in green, yellow, and orange. As you can see, Muskogee is currently in the orange, which is more than 14.3 cases per 100,000 for the positive test rate that you've heard Mr. Walton talk about. The next page over is kind of a, a line graph that reflects where we're at in relation to the yellow and the orange. The second portion in your packet is, says Oklahoma's moderate risk phase moving to orange and what that means and what we should do, the state recommends, when your county is in orange. The general guidelines for high-risk individuals, consider wearing face coverings at all times in public settings, limit travel to only essential travel. If telework is not possible, limit travel to work in essential services only, limit visiting friends or family without urgent need, limit attending gatherings of any number of people outside your household or residence, and do not visit hospitals, nursing homes, or other residential care facilities. And the last piece of information in your packet is that state report Mr. Van had referenced a couple of weeks ago. As Mr. Miller stated, these reports usually come out on Sundays. I've noticed the state is usually a day behind on updating the state's website as far as executive order reports, so on and so forth. I was hoping to have yesterday's report for you guys today, but it simply did not get uploaded in time. So, this is last Sunday's report from the Washington task force, coronavirus task force, their summary of what they see and their recommendations from the White House. So, there's some good information in here, both from the state and from the federal level and from the data that reflects the city of Muskogee and Muskogee County. Does anybody have any questions for me before we introduce Mr. Walton?
Yes, I'm wondering, Mayor, I recognize.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at Oklahoma, and you said Oklahoma is different from Washington, correct? Or it's being in the red and orange because Washington DC has us in the red?
Correct.
And I find that's a problem because, you know, we listen to two people, two different organizations, two different entities.
Sure.
And I know we've had a lot of cases, I know in the paper I looked at Sunday, we had 1,500 people, 1,500 people here in Muskogee that was, had this virus, and so many dead. And every time, every day I look in the paper, it's going up and up. And the TAF situation also has added to this, which is there in Muskogee County. And like I say, I think myself that by it being in the red, that we need to go and do some other things besides what we're doing now. But I will mention that here in a little bit, but I'll let Mr. Walton talk.
Sure.
I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor.
And I will say, I do agree with Councilor Van from this standpoint that along the lines of the recommendation that the task force is going to send up to the governor's office, that the state needs to find a way to reconcile how they're going to determine what categories we're in because it is misleading when, or ambiguous, I should say, when a national outlet says we're one way, but then the state says we're something else. For example, the New York Times article says that Muskogee City is in the top 10 people, top 10 cities with an outbreak, which was reported inaccurately. They should have said Muskogee County and then referenced the fact that it was isolated to the prison in TAF, which they did not do. And so, I do agree in that regard. It is ambiguous, and when we get an ambiguous signal, it does make it more difficult for legislators, counselors, mayors to make those types of decisions. So, thank you.
That is correct. And, Mr. Mayor, if you remember, we've had a discussion before about the yellow and orange county tracker. It's based on the date of onset, symptom onset. So, somebody goes to get tested, it takes four or five days for that test result to comes back. It's not based on today's data, it's based on date of onset. They started showing symptoms, so that data may be five, seven days, even older. As you remember, we were in the yellow for a couple of weeks, and the next thing we know, we're in the orange, and according to the charts, we'd had been for a couple of weeks. So, we have to be careful when looking at the information and look as a whole and how they're deciding that, what makes the federal data different from the state-level data, how are they looking at it differently? And with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Walton from Muskogee County Health Department.
Yes, hello Tyler, thank you, Mayor, Council. Data-wise, not a lot of additional to add on top of your report that Tyler has presented other than just really noting, as Manager Miller mentioned, that we are at the highest level of active cases in the city of Muskogee, currently at 130 cases as of today, the 14th. We are continuing to do curbside testing at the Muskogee County Health Department. No appointments necessary from 8:30 to 10:30 Monday through Friday, averaging about 40, 40 to 50 tests collected per day and are continuing to see high rates of positivity for those tests, conducting, averaging around nine or 10% positives. And, yeah, we're also awaiting the White House Task Force report to be posted on the state's website, which as of just a minute ago is still, still not available today. I'd be happy to take any questions from anyone.
Would one of y'all want to go first?
I was just going to ask you, Doug, so we're getting more tests in where we can do 40 or 50 a day now?
That is correct, counselor, and really have been able to keep that pace for the past several weeks. There were times back even in August and July when we were doing even, you know, more like 60 to 70, even plus, but now averaging 40 to 50, and expect to have adequate testing supplies to maintain that rate.
That's good news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Doug, how are we doing on the nursing homes? Are we still testing?
They have conducted another round of testing and, to my knowledge, have had no additional outbreaks in Muskogee County. They, I don't believe are conducting anything more than the, the original PCR swab test. I know there had been some mention of using the rapid test, but I don't think they have the current capacity to do that yet within the nursing homes. So, it does still take two to four days to have those results.
So, when's the last time we tested nursing homes?
You know, I'm actually, I'm not sure of that figure. I can, I can find out. I know it will vary by site. They, they will not, you know, have all been tested on the same date, and I know the last round, it took over a week to get all of the tests collected and submitted and, and then, of course, to get the results. But I can do some, some checking and, and let Mr. Miller know to relay that to you if you'd like.
So, what you're telling me is that it takes a week to test all the nursing homes, facilities we have here in Muskogee?
That is, I believe, how long it took to do, to do all of the patients and staff in all of the nursing homes throughout the county. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question, Doug, for you. This is concerning the outbreak there in TAF, Oklahoma. Is the local health department working with the state, the state health department to put some kind of plan in action for the outbreak in TAF, even though it's in the prisons? My concern is how that would translate into the community and over into the city of Muskogee.
Right, yes. It is, it has definitely been a concern, and, and I know that we have had ongoing dialogue with DOC and the State Department of Health Division that handles some of the regulatory areas with prisons. None of, none of those occur through the county health departments. It's a, it's a separate state division, and so we have had some involvement mostly in terms of collection and submission of samples, but as far as the enforcement or addressing of conditions within the, within the facility that may affect or have affected the outbreak, those are actually outside of, of the jurisdiction of the county health department and really not something that we've had the ability to be directly involved with.
Are we got a plan in case this filtered into the community in Muskogee? Are we ready?
Well, I do think we're, you know, probably, hopefully, as ready as, as we can be. You know, the, the concern, of course, would be through primarily staff or perhaps, perhaps an inmate that would be discharged, but I know they are, they are handling that differently than they, than they did in terms of testing now. And my sense is that all of the measures that we are taking, both as a city and a county, to reduce the spread will be the same things that would reduce the chance of someone, you know, coming into the community and spreading from having, you know, acquired it there or, or anywhere else. But honestly, the, the measures that DOC and, and the Inspection Division at the State Health Department, they may very well have other, other things that they're working on that, that, that I'm not aware of, but I, I know that there's been great concern about addressing conditions within the facility that would contain it and keep it from spreading or from leaving the facility.
Thank you, Doug.
Doug, this is Mayor Coleman. Several weeks ago, you used the terminology high yellow, low orange when we were referencing these color charts. In terms of Muskogee County, where are we in your estimation in terms of that same terminology?
Well, unfortunately, you know, due to the, due to the outbreaks in the correction facilities, we're, we're definitely in the high orange now. It's based on the cases per, per 100,000, and, and we gained, you know, approximately 730 or so cases through, through at least the one facility. And, and so, it's pushed our numbers, well, the, the most recent report that shows those from the state, not the task force, the White House Coronavirus Task Force, but the state COVID alert system, we're, we're still in the orange, but we, we now have a, as of the 10th was, I believe, the, the date that this was generated, 146.4 cases per 100,000. We had been hovering in the 14 to 15 cases per 100,000 prior to that, to that outbreak. But the, I think the challenge, one of the challenges with this, with the system that's being used, which was recently adjusted for this COVID alert system that the state is using, is that in order to reach a, a red level, it requires a couple of different thresholds to be met, which were recently changed. And one of them is that a county needs to reside in a region that has an elevated risk level, and that's defined as either reaching maximum hospital capacity in terms of beds and at least 50% of, of additional contracted beds that are filled as one possible condition, or average days of statewide PPE that's on hand or available, less than five days, or percent of ventilators available, less than 5% statewide. So, one of those conditions has to be met in order for a county to, to go from orange to red. It's actually not a cases per 100,000 type measurement for the, the red threshold. So, as of right now, there are no counties under this system that are red, and, and apparently won't be until one of those conditions is met in a region in which the county is. So, that's a long answer.
That's okay, it's a long process. The other question I have in that regard is, is there a way that you know of where we would extrapolate the numbers from TAF, the way from the numbers of the county to give us a more accurate projection of where we are as a county?
Well, about the best way, the best way that I know to do it is to just be looking at the, at the different municipalities within the county, up against the, the city and the county itself. And so, been tracking those numbers now really since the, since the corrections outbreak. And as you probably know, you know, we got up to as high as 744 cases for the town of of Taft, because those are where they're falling for, for those facilities. And 673 are designated as recovered now with 69 active cases in the town of Taft. And that, that's, you know, reflected within your numbers you're probably seeing for the county, active cases of, I believe, 244 currently active. So you could, you could pull out 69 of the, the 69 active cases showing up for Taft right now out of the 244 active cases showing for the county. Bear with me. So that would be 175 now for the county active cases that would not include any of those that had been related to, to that outbreak.
Then my last follow-up question, what you just said, would be that if those numbers don't reflect the full 700-plus that were infected, wouldn't we not then be in the high orange category?
Well, good point. Yeah, and, and it's through the 10th. I suspect, you know, they, I know that they generate those numbers, the cases per 100,000, based on the seven-day running average. And so my guess is if, if it was recalculated today or in the next week or so, it would probably, well, when it is recalculated, it probably will drop back down. The other thing is, those are, those numbers on the Alert System map, the 146, is based on the, on the date either that symptoms appear or that the test, let's see here, I want to get this right, and I know it changed, and, okay. Symptom onset or date of test for asymptomatic cases. It's, I guess it's just not entirely clear to me how exactly they're going to factor in recovered cases into this alert system. And, you know, that's something that we started tracking, Tyler and I both, fairly early on, the active cases relative to the total cases per day or running total of cases to date. But, you know, the, the tracker, this COVID alert tracker, where I think you may, I don't know if you have the current schematic, but I know Tyler has shown it before where it shows the dates across the bottom and the number of cases, it with the colored dots, green, yellow, or orange, and they kind of bounce around depending on that date of onset or date of asymptomatic test. And I'm, I feel certain that it'll, that it will drop back down, but I just, I really would have to, I'm gonna have to do some checking to find out when we will expect that, because I just don't see how they're accounting for the, the recovered rates on, on that tracking system. So it's a good question, and I don't know the answer.
Thank you. Yeah, Doug, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I got a question, Doug.
Okay.
On 8/30/2020, did you know Oklahoma was in the red?
You're referring to the Coronavirus Task Force?
In Washington, DC.
System, yes. Yes, I did, I did, I did hear, I did hear that, and I do believe I mentioned it on our last call with the, with the council that we had a couple, two different systems that we were utilizing in Oklahoma, or at least that applied to Oklahoma.
Okay, tell me another thing. How's the hospital, we have a representative from the hospital here tonight? I just wondered how many other people is sick in the hospital with this virus right here in Muskogee? We hadn't had a report from them in a while.
That is a good question, sir, and I'm, I'm not sure if, if Tyler or manager have someone there tonight or not.
You have anybody here, Tyler?
Not tonight, no, sir. But we did meet with Ms. Michelle Keeling from St. Francis Health Systems last Friday. The COVID-19 Task Force met with her, and she did come give us a presentation on their stats, pretty much going back to March since they started tracking the COVID-19 data and where they were in relation to Muskogee, Tulsa, the surrounding areas, and the other St. Francis healthcare systems. She gave us a good presentation on where Muskogee was in that. But those numbers vary daily. I mean, I could tell you right now, we have, I don't know the number we have, but we could have six COVID patients in there, and tomorrow morning, we could have two. And then tomorrow afternoon, we could have four more that's in there. It's something that changes every day, and I'd hate to come up just once a week to council to say that we have six COVID patients, and by the time we leave here tomorrow morning, we only have two, because they discharged four of them. So keeping a daily tracking of the COVID-19 patients in our hospitals, I'm not sure is a, a good reliable source, something to do. Ms. Keeling does know to reach out to me if they do hit that data point where they have no more room, where they, they are going to overflow, where they are going to go and divert. That is something that the healthcare system does, reach out to emergency management officials so we can decide what is the best course of action. Do we need to contact the VA for diversion there, or do we need to keep diverting to Tulsa? But that's something the healthcare administrators talk about on a daily basis, if not multiple times a day. But if we do go into divert status or overflow, or we're having to do something different at the hospital, I'll be sure to let city management know, which I'm sure in turn we'll let you guys know.
But you don't know the exact how many cases, the most we've had at the hospital in St. Francis here?
Do you recall the most number? 24 at one time, and that's when they said 24 is probably the highest we want to get to, and they haven't been there since. I want to say nine was the number last week that they saw, which was the highest number they had last week.
Turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walton, can you remind our community when they can get tested at the Muskogee County Health Department, and maybe the requirements from having a nasal swab test versus the rapid test?
Sure, Tyler. So testing available on-site at the Health Department, 8:30 to 10:30 a.m., Monday through Friday. No appointment is needed for that, and there's no, no criteria or requirements other than age 12 months and older. No symptoms are required or anything. We do also have rapid tests available onsite, which are by appointment, and patients there need to have at least one symptom and then meet one other high-risk criteria, which would be over 65 or have a pre-existing condition. And that, the number to call for the, the rapid test to determine if one is eligible,
Thank you, Mr. Walton. And with that, I'd like to introduce Trish German with Muskogee County EMS.
Trish German with Muskogee County EMS. Just a little follow-up. We have gotten some PPE in, gloves. I know we were down to about two weeks on gloves. We just got a good shipment in. I think they said last week, so we're doing really good there. We've also gotten some devices in, about 30 devices in, that we'll be putting on the trucks for the medics to wear. What it does is it filters oxygen, not oxygen, but air, gets filtered air, pappers for the medics for when they're transporting ventilator patients, patients that are, could possibly be COVID-related. So those are now available for our medics. Flu season's coming up. Make sure everybody gets a flu shot. We're gonna push that out there pretty soon. Does anybody have any questions?
Where are they offering flu shots right now that you know of? Sometimes they do the free ones, sometimes you have to pay. Do we know where they're gonna be?
So I was out at Economy Pharmacy just last week, and I know there was a gentleman there who asked for a flu shot, so they gave them a flu shot there. Boo on the flu will be October 30th. It's on a Friday. Citizens of Muskogee can drive up, get a flu shot, and drive off. They don't have to get out of their car. So we'll be pushing that. Muskogee County EMS, along with St. Francis Hospital, will be out there doing that. Muskogee Medical Foundation, I believe, also.
And as I recall, is Boo on the Flu free?
Boo on the Flu is free.
It is free to the residents. Okay.
Yes, yes. And then naturally, if we get extra flu shots in, I will actually go to the patient's residence and give a flu shot, usually to elderly that can't get out or shouldn't get out. I'll come to their house and I'll give them a flu shot.
Are those the high antigen flu shots?
I don't know which ones they are yet.
Okay.
I know Josh had an appointment with St. Francis, I think, last week, so I'm not for sure. Any other questions? Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my update. I'd like to turn the floor back over to Mr. Miller.
Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked about the Boo on the Flu, that is, is free to the public. We've, we've heard from experts, you guys have had a lot of data in front of you. Staff's happy to answer any questions, but we have no more information to present at this time.
Mr. Miller, remember, Mr. Mayor, if you recognize?
Yes, sir.
Y'all got a couple items tonight that we need to clear up.
Sure.
I talked to you about this situation. We talked to the chief, you talked to the chief, I couldn't, but you did. And what bothers, what's my concern is, when we have officers pulling up in police cars and pulling people over for speeding or doing whatever, they don't have this on, these masks. I have a problem with that. And your officer, you gave me this paper this morning?
Yep.
It says, "Remember to keep a distance of six foot from people when interviewing them. Always wear a surgical mask or the issue neck goggle over your nose and mouth when in contact with the public. Utilize your N95 rubber gloves if the answer is yes to one of these three above questions or not, if you feel better, if you feel that it is necessary." But what is not being done, Mr. Miller, is those officers are not wearing their masks. When you interact with me or anyone, I've got them on video, and so we need to make a clear point tonight whether they need to wear those masks or not wear those masks. And it says on their car, "To protect and serve." When they wear those masks, and they come up to me, and if they pull me over, I want them to have a mask on because they could have coronavirus. I could have it. I could pass it on to them. So when we made our deal back in, this happened in July of 27, 2020, face covering should be required to be worn in accordance with the CDC guidelines for all members of the public who enter and while at our city-owned and operated facilities. These are city employees. They need to have their mask on. You know, and I see it time and time again, so I'm glad, Chief Tehe is here with you, behind you there. But tonight, we need to get some kind of rules in place where when those officers are out talking to people and they're sitting real close, I could go in there with Dr. Who's, but I'm not. But I'm just saying, they need to be, they need to have face covering on. You know, we need to get that straight, straight tonight. Because I see, I drive around Muskogee, I see too much of it all the time. Don't make sense. Not, it don't take but two seconds to put this mask on and go up to a car if you pull them over. Even when they have other incidents in Muskogee, I've just seen them out there just talking amongst themselves. They should have face covering on in their own faces, talking. So I have a problem with that.
Yes, sir, I understand. So...
So I just want to know how we gonna solve this problem tonight?
Okay. Well, I was waiting for, for an opportunity, and if you're, if you're ready for me to speak, I'm happy to address that.
The floor is yours, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Yes, so we've had that discussion, and so I, I've got Chief Tehe to, to address the situations that you're talking about. But in general, I want to say, I don't think our police officers are really part of the problem in about COVID-19 in our, our community. They have been healthy. We've had, they're, they're not the problem. I think they're a part of the solution in our community. However, when we say how we're gonna act, we're gonna need to act that way. And so we're gonna talk about that, and we're gonna talk about what the policy says and how we're going to keep implementing it. I'm gonna ask Chief Tehe to, to step forward, and he'll address some of those issues, and if there's further questions, I may assist him as well.
Because I've seen it on television, on, on the different channels.
Mm-hmm.
You know what's mean is, you know, if you're gonna say something and you go on to TV with it, I want it to be true.
Yeah.
And I want you to follow your guidelines.
And on, on TV, Chief Tehe said that we're gonna wear masks more often, and we're, our police officers are wearing masks more often. He's gonna outline all the situations in which our officers do wear masks, and I know for a fact that oftentimes on police stops, on traffic stops, our officers do wear masks, but not all the time. And so I'm gonna let him speak to that.
First of all, let me apologize to everybody for being here, because as far as I know, and I've checked with both my deputy chiefs before I came up here tonight, and there's not been any complaints whatsoever from our citizens. It's my responsibility, I'm the one that put the information out to our officers. The, one of the things that we did is we look at CDC guidelines with regards to interaction, as long as you're not within a certain amount of distance for a certain period of time, it's not required. The other thing that we came up with, as well as we looked at Oklahoma City, we looked at Tulsa Police Department, Oklahoma Highway Patrol, as well as other agencies across the country, they don't wear masks out on traffic stops, because one of the biggest problems that we have in law enforcement is with regards to communications. Communication with regards to use of force is adamant that we have to be clear about what we do. And that's one of the things that other agencies has mentioned, was with regards to why those masks aren't necessary. So one, we have the CDC guidelines that doesn't require that, because we're not within a certain period of time for a length of period of time. And the other is with regards to if there's anything we don't want to be an issue in law enforcement, it's communication with those that we're in active. We wear them at, anytime they're taking reports, if it's inside a building, and when they go into Walmart for arrest, all the other things. To my knowledge, those have been taken care of, and as I said earlier, we've not received one complaint from any business or from a, anybody within the community. And I think, I appreciate Mr. Miller mentioning with regards to our officers, to have an agency our size, and through the entire process, we've had one positive test. And that was early on in the process, you all may remember that. We put things in place to keep that from happening ever since. And this is despite numerous occasions where we've arrested people and had people that we put in handcuffs, had in our car, that we know for a fact are positive. And our officers are taking well enough care of themselves to keep from being exposed and being tested positive. So again, I apologize for the, that's my understanding of the reason we're doing what we're doing. And unless I'm instructed otherwise by the city manager, our officers will not be required to do those on traffic stops. It doesn't mean they can't, but what it means is anytime they want to wear them, they're, they're more than free, especially if they have, you know, any type of pre-existing conditions that make them a little more leery of things, they can wear them all the time. Outside that, I believe our agencies are doing an exceptional job of following the rules the CDC put in place.
Chief Tehe, I'm just going by your memo right here.
And I've just given you the reason why I'm deviating from it.
And you said you, you haven't had anybody complain, correct?
Correct.
Well, I'm a city councilman, I'm complaining.
Okay, well, you were the first.
I'm the first then. You know what, sometimes the first, you may be the last, but you know what? I don't just follow anybody's trail. I got my own trail I go down. But what I'm saying is, it would be more practical that your officers, because it was a time where you wouldn't have that mask on right now, sitting there, just like your officers. It'd be practical and more convenient for our citizens, more safe for our citizens when they walk up to their car to have that mask on and talking to them, especially when you have an accident. And like I said, I see it on video all the time. You write, this stuff is real. People die from coronavirus. It's real. It's real right here in Oklahoma and Muskogee also. So that's just me. I don't know how this other council feels about it up here, but I don't do not want an officer coming up to me that don't have no mask on. I don't want you coming over to me and don't have nothing on to protect me. We're protecting each other. And I'm saying, Chief Tehe, I'm saying this out of love. I'm not saying this trying to be smart, hateful, or anything like this. I'm just saying it out of love. You know, it don't take long. I know you said you go by other cities' examples and blah, 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 but you don't have to go by other cities. Choose your own.
But you wanted to follow the other cities when we talked about security for our building. You wanted to quote Oklahoma City, you wanted to quote Tulsa, all the other places. But now when we have something that's a positive for us, now you don't want us to use that? That makes no sense to me.
Well, the thing is, we, you're right, because every city I went to, they had security downstairs like we got tonight.
And we have security down there now, don't we?
You have security down there?
They're not wearing masks on traffic stops, and unless the council or the city manager instructs me to, we're not going to.
Well, that's the city manager's call, but I mean, this council up here, if y'all want... if y'all want to, you know, to go along with this, that's fine with me, because I'm just only one vote up here. But only thing different is, like I said, coronavirus is real. And we need masks on. That's all I can say. Because I see it in other cities. I do see it in other cities where the police officers do have masks on TV. You know, Tulsa may not have them, but you know, that's all. We're trying to be, you know, we're just trying to do what's right, Chief Tehe, that's all.
I appreciate your concern for us.
Chief, I will say, with few exceptions within our own police department, in the last several months, we have gotten positive reviews in terms of officer courtesy and how they're dealing with residents. And I also will say that in terms of the civil unrest that is taking place right now, that body language is a key factor in terms of reducing incidents between officers and residents, particularly in the arena of traffic stops. Because if I'm not mistaken, neither Tulsa nor Oklahoma City, who actually have mask mandates, neither of those cities require officers to wear masks during traffic stops. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so one of the things that I do want to be mindful of is to compliment those officers that are trying to do what they can during the COVID-19 pandemic. But also to say, personally speaking, I know that when an officer approaches me as a younger African-American male, when we connect with our facial expression, that can go a long way to transmitting how that interaction may go. If we're both masked, eye contact alone may not be helpful in deescalating the situation. That's just my viewpoint of it, that that facial expression can go a longer way towards making certain that a situation does not become out of hand, which may be why those other law enforcement agencies in the state, as well as around the country, given the civil unrest conditions of what's going on, have opted not to require their officers to wear masks during traffic stops.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes.
If y'all are finished.
You may.
I just want to say, Chief, thank you for all that you got to do and relate back to the officers that we appreciate everything that they're doing to protect our citizens here in Muskogee.
Thank you.
So my, let me say this with Chief Tehe, the word is, they don't have to wear a mask, correct?
It's optional for them to wear a mask on a traffic stop.
It's optional for them to wear, what I'm saying is, according to your paper here, it's a little different optional.
I'll send out a new paper tomorrow. That's on me. That's something we tweaked through the process after reading information from other agencies and reading other stories for exactly what the mayor's talking about with regards to communication and ability to communicate.
Well, I'm just getting a good understanding that our citizens of Muskogee with the police department, when you don't stand with no mask, ain't nobody complaining, everything's all right. The virus is good, it's just good, right?
That's not, you're the one saying that, not anybody else.
Without a mask, I just, I mean, I'm serious. What's all the councilmen up here think about this? This is our citizens that we, we sat in this seat up here to represent the citizens of Muskogee. At least I do. I sit right here to represent the citizens of Muskogee. And I don't want coronavirus. Do y'all imagine your children having coronavirus and they pass away? That would hurt. Oh, that would hurt. That would hurt my heart with anybody. But we have, well, you can't, you don't have to wear a mask. How do the other councilmen up here feel? I'm just curious. I mean, y'all may be wrong.
So according to Councilman Van's question, do we have any comments from the council or recommendation?
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
We talked about it at our last council meeting. We talked about our trash workers and our people that when they were out picking up trash, they did not have to have their mask on. When they got back in the truck, then if they were in the truck with someone else to put their mask back on. I thought that related to everyone, including the police department. That was my understanding.
I believe, Councilor Hibbs, you're correct in your assessment. When we had the conversation, it was long as it didn't interfere with the lineup work.
Right.
I think that was the language that was used.
You know what's surprising, you know, we're talking about this, with every one of us sitting in here, but a few has got masks on. That old summer out there on the street, we got masks on up here. Our citizens see us up here with this mask on. And we got people in this audience right now that's on our city property that we have definitely a specific ordinance saying you come up to City Hall or anywhere else in our facilities, you need that mask. Am I right or wrong? Tell me, Councilor Mayor, am I right or wrong? That's what it says. We need masks on up in here.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to clarify. Yes, Officer Tehe, you're correct on that CDC. Per the CDC guidelines for law enforcement personnel, it defines close contact as being within six feet for a longer period of time. And that time that most hospitals uses is roughly 20 minutes. And it also says, the CDC guideline says, for law enforcement personnel performing routine activities such as traffic stops, the health risk is considered low. But I think that as also dealing with this and dealing with the public with health every day, it is evident that people's anxieties with this virus is all over the place. It's almost a spectrum where some people really don't care about it and other people are really concerned about it. And I think that if an officer came up on a traffic stop and a citizen asked them, do you mind putting on your mask or will you put on your mask, would the officer put on their mask?
Yes, they would.
Okay. So, but as far as contracting the virus from a routine traffic stop, it's considered low risk at this time per the CDC.
Correct.
Dr. Who's?
Yes, sir.
Would you want somebody, your doctor, would you want your patients coming in your office without a mask?
They wear a mask if they are under the age of 10 or over the age of 10.
They wear a mask, right?
They do. But I'm also, I'm in the room with them. I'm in their face, looking at them. They're in there for probably coughing or other things. It's, this is apples and oranges. I'm just saying that with the guidelines that have been recommended by the CDC, right now, the officers are following it with a mask. I would encourage them to wear a mask, but with the discussion and I read further on it, it was some issues with how communication would be because it is, there is a lot of tension right now with police and community relations. And, but there also was a presence that they didn't want officers to appear that they were above the law by not wearing a mask. So it's a gray area and it's a balance. It really is. And I don't know if, I'm not an officer, I don't do traffic stops. I deal with people completely different. So I'm gonna have to fall on the judgment of Chief Tehe on what he would recommend his officers to do in regards to wearing a mask for a routine traffic stop. Now, if it goes past a routine traffic stop, as the guideline says, it says that they should put on a mask as well as other PPE. And if they're symptomatic, they not put on a mask, but a N95 mask, not just a gator or face covering.
Correct.
So is that correct?
Yes.
So, so that's what I'm saying. I can't, I don't want to tell him that the officers need to do this because I don't do routine traffic stops. There is a risk involved with it to the officer. So I'm gonna have to defer to what Chief Tehe thinks is best for his officers.
Other comments from council?
You know, we got a governor here in the state of Oklahoma. And him not listening to the reports right from the White House, from Washington, DC. He's the same way. He don't listen. The rules he go by, I remember you saying, Mayor, one time, that municipalities, you like for the governor to make the decision. I remember you saying that. The governor is not making decisions. He's not making, he's not making decisions about this coronavirus here. It's up to us as a municipality to do that, to protect our citizens, because the governor is not doing it. If I'm wrong, you tell me I'm wrong, because he's not doing it. But I'll let it go. And I got one more item. I know y'all ain't gonna pass it, but you know what? At least it's been on my heart and my mind that I try.
Ivory, I just wanted to say something for you. Go to your next item. Chief Tehe, you did say that your documentation that you put out the first time, you're gonna amend that to reflect what it is today? Okay, we appreciate that. Because Ivory did point out something. And what we're finding is that we're not good stewards of our own laws. We making them, but we also break them. I believe that the council did vote that anybody sitting in this arena should have a mask on. You can look around the room and you see who do and you see who don't. And we silent. We need to follow the rules. We are the example, are the leaders. If you don't wear a mask and you put in a law and you break it, the citizen's gonna do the same thing. So look at it and take it to heart, people, you know, as we say, this is serious. And we do know Taft, Oklahoma, even though it's the prison, they have released some people. They come into the community and the virus do spread. I hope and pray that no one close to you get the virus. Because when it happened to you, then it becomes serious with you. And I'm sure some people in this room, they're contested that today. They didn't believe in the mask, but they wearing them today because they got the virus or they know somebody close to them that got the virus. So all I'm saying is that just keep in mind that we're talking about health and safety for the welfare of the citizens of Muskogee. And we are leaders and we should, if we set something in writing, we should at least follow it. Thank you.
Councilor Van, you getting ready to present a recommendation?
Yes, Councilman McGee, I totally agree. I'm glad what you said because like I say, we make these rules up here and we break our own rules. We break our own rules. It's a shame. Yeah, it's a shame. But that's the way life is, you know? Some people think they're better than others and some people think they're not. But we ought to follow what we put in place up here. So Mr. Tucker, because I believe in Washington, DC, instead of the Health Department or the Emergency Management, all this time, I'd like to put something in place, which I know the council is not going to vote on it and go for it, but we gonna try it anyway. Because like I say, when I go to bed tonight, my conscience is gonna be clear. I done all I could do to try to get people to put the mask on and be safe. That's all. I'm not doing nothing that's against the law. I'm just, I'm doing what I think is right. So I'll turn the floor to you, Mr. Tucker, and let you say what I want, what I would like to have.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Van. Mayor members of the council, this idea has been brought up before. And this is a subsequent amendment to Resolution 2801. And this is to be proposed by Councilor Van. 2801 is the resolution where the city of Muskogee declared our state of local emergency. This is different than Resolution 2803, which is our joint city council, city-county resolution. So the proposed amendment, which would represent the Fifth Amendment to this resolution, would include a mask mandate for all individuals. So the specific language that is proposed to be included in that amendment states as follows. It is further resolved that in the interest of the public health as authorized by 11 OS 22120A, the following rules should be in effect within the city of Muskogee beginning at midnight on September 15th, 2020, until further act of the city council. A, all persons shall wear face coverings when entering and while inside any indoor place open to the public or in any outdoor location where maintaining a social distance of at least six feet is impractical. Face coverings shall mean a uniform piece of material that securely covers a person's nose and mouth and remains affixed in a place, remains affixed in place without the use of one's hands or a face shield. Face covering should fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face and allow for breathing without restriction. In accordance with the CDC guidelines and in accordance with what Oklahoma City and Tulsa have done when they did a mask mandate, we did include a list of exceptions to that general rule that face coverings are required. One, persons who fall in CDC guidance, under the CDC guidance for those who should not wear face coverings due to medical or mental health condition or developmental disability, children under 18, restaurant patrons while they're eating and drinking, persons exercising in communal outdoor spaces, or persons walking or exercising with other persons from the same household in communal outdoor spaces, so long as physical distancing is maintained. Persons congregating in communal outdoor spaces with others not in their same household are alternatively required to wear face coverings when physical distancing is not being maintained. Five, settings where it's not practical or feasible to wear a face covering, such as dental services, medical treatments, or while swimming. Number six, occupants in a personal vehicle, personal office, or similarly private space while other persons outside of the person's household are not present. Private homes. And then finally, offices and workplaces that are not public service areas where physical distancing between employees and other occupants can be consistently maintained during hours of operations. Similarly to Tulsa, there is no specific penalty for violation of this mandate. If we did want to make this a penal ordinance, then we would need to actually create an ordinance versus including it in the resolution. However, if someone is in a private business and they're acting under the guidance of this rule and a business says, you're told by the city to wear a mask, please leave, and the person refuses, of course, they can be prosecuted for trespass or disorderly conduct, depending on how that works out. But failure to wear a mask does not have its own independent criminal penalty under this ordinance, and that is similar to the city of Tulsa. Oklahoma City, I believe, did their mask ordinance where, mask ordinance where it was a, I think it was a $6 fine for the first couple, and then it was a sliding scale. So that is proposed resolution, the Fifth Amendment to Resolution 2801. Happy to answer any questions.
Is that a motion?
Let me see, one more thing, Mr. Mayor. One thing I looked at when China had it. When China had it, Korea had it, other countries across the water had it. This coronavirus just spreading, spreading, spreading. But the United States, our problem is, we like the luxuries, we like to play. You know, I'd rather wear a mask and stay six foot apart from somebody than to be six foot under. Because that's the next step if you, you know, if you don't, your immune system don't take it. But over there in those other countries, you watched them on TV, everybody walking around had a mask. They even had the suits to go around and spray. You don't see that here in the United States. Those countries now have got better. But like I say, we like to play. We playing with our own lives. So keep playing. Keep playing. God got a way of getting your attention. Trust me. He will get your attention. So I make a motion that this resolution be approved. That's my motion.
Mr. Tucker, shouldn't it be, Mr. Van, I think it's amendment to the resolution.
Yeah, but what Councilor Van's motion is to approve the Fifth Amendment to Resolution 2801.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
No.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
No.
Alex Reynolds?
No.
Evelyn Hibbs?
No.
Jamie Stout?
No.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
No, and the item does not pass. Item number two.
Discuss and take possible action on a proposed tourism plan for the city of Muskogee as well as provide direction to staff regarding a possible future budget amendment to reflect any such plan adopted or take other necessary action.
Before we bring Mr. Miller to the microphone, council, in our strategic planning session, we had said among ourselves that we did not have enough information to move forward to give staff direction on tonight. And if that is the case, we're going to strike item number two from the agenda. I don't know if we need a motion.
You would need a motion if there is maybe some dissension, but if it's by consensus, you don't need a motion to take no action.
Okay. Counsel?
You said we're taking it off the agenda for tonight?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna say this, and trust me, I don't mean no harm. Probably the reason you're taking it off the agenda tonight is because you don't want to vote on it tonight. Because that's just the way it is up here. That's just the way it is. I know. Oh, I've learned a lot sitting in this seat. So that's all I got to say, because y'all just wanna kick the can down the road to next week and then huddle up and talk about it. Because up here, it's always a 63 vote anyway. So, you know, that's just what I think of this, kicking the can down the road instead of got these people here tonight and don't want to discuss this. He knows they're here. They didn't come up here and waste their time for nothing since we've been here since 5:30. So that's up to y'all, council, you know? It's like I say, this is a learning experience up here and it's just, every citizen need to know how it feels sitting in this seat.
Mayor, based on those comments, I do think you would need a... Mayor, based on those comments, I do think you would need a motion to take, to strike the item.
Do we have a motion to strike the item? So moved. Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
No.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number three.
Receive report on the city of Muskogee's multi-year street plan, including updates on current projects and upcoming CIP street projects, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller, I believe that since Mr. Stewart is ill today and not able to be present, that we would like to strike item number three from the agenda.
Yes, we can present it at next week's Public Works Committee meeting.
At the Public Works Committee meeting. Any questions from counsel? Item number four.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2825, declaring a parcel of property located within the 200 block of North 12th Street, more particularly described in the resolution, as surplus to the needs of the city and authorize the conveyance of said property, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Garvin?
Mayor, members of the council, the parcel is located in the 200 block of North 12th Street. It consists of 6,961 square feet. Since it is less than 7,200 square feet, it is not considered a buildable lot. According to the ordinance, if it's not a buildable lot, only the abutting property owners can obtain the property to expand their existing yard. On this particular piece of property, both property owners on each side of the property was interested in it. So, we felt the best way to determine who gets the property is to go ahead and accept sealed bids and give it to the highest bidder. We did go out for bids. We opened the bid on August the 14th and Ms. Janet Parks was the high bidder in the amount of 600. So, we are recommending approval to declare the property surplus and authorize the conveyance to Mrs. Parks in the amount of 600. Glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Garvin or a motion to proceed?
Make a motion to proceed.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number five.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2827, declaring items of personal property presently in the possession of the city of Muskogee to be surplus to the needs of the city of Muskogee and authorize the city manager to offer for sale or dispose of the same, all as per the attached list, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, this is a relatively routine item. You guys see this from time to time. We do have items that we'd like to surplus from the teen center, equipment that is no longer in use, and we do have some police vehicles. You guys, in the last year or so, we've bought several new vehicles. So, we're taking these and retiring them, putting out of service. This resolution would allow us to dispose of those and the city would like to also partner with the Muskogee Public Schools. We have in the past donated vehicles to them, police vehicles, when they're done, we're done with them and they are interested in these vehicles. So, I hope to be able to pass those along to them after the meeting if you so approve. So, be happy to answer any questions and staff does recommend approval.
Do we have any other discussion or questions for Mr. Miller?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, I believe, because we had two people to make a motion for approval. Do we have any other discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number six.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Tridaby Environmental Services LLC for conducting the household hazardous waste pollutant collection, transportation, and disposal event for the city, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller, in the absence of Mr. Stewart, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do.
Mayor and council members, we have this event for citizens twice a year. It's our household waste event and we went out to bid for new, or got cost per proposals for new contractors and we, you were provided with all the information on their costs. We would like to award the, the contract to Tridaby. We are currently using them, but they were the, hold on a second, I'm sorry. They had the next to lowest cost for disposal and they had a lower setup and mobilization cost. So, that's why we would like to award them and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the council or recommendation?
Move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number seven.
Consider approval of Task Order Number Four in accordance with a proposal agreement between the Muskogee Municipal Authority and Cowan Group Engineering LLC for professional services or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, I want to thank Abigail Wright for making that last presentation and I'd like to ask Stephen Morton, our Assistant Public Works Director, to come forward and he'll address this issue.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We would like to strike this item from the agenda as we have discovered some discrepancies with our engineering firm on this. With it being such a big project, we want to make sure that all of our eyes are dotted and t's are crossed, so to speak. We get one shot at this and we sure don't want to mess this thing up and have to come back and fix a bunch of repairs. So, we would like to strike this item from the agenda.
Thank you. Questions from council? The item is stricken. Item number eight.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid from, from direct traffic control in the amount of $27,273 for the York Street and Chandler Road intersection striping, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
I'd like Mr. David Garner to address this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. What we got before you is a striping project on York and Chandler Road. It's on go on York Street from Elliott Road to Delaware. And then on Chandler, it's on go from Virginia to Edmund Street. It's gonna be a total removal of all the striping sidewalks or crosswalks. Last time this intersection was redone, it was five years ago. The funding for this is on come out of traffic accounts. We run this through the Street Advisory Committee, which they approved this project. With their help, we put the project together, sent it for quotes out, sent it out to six vendors that we normally use and advertised it where we needed to advertise it. We got two bids back. They were over the $25,000 limit. We pulled the bids or the quotes back, sent it out for sealed bids. We got two companies that bid on it, both local companies. Completion of this project with these two companies would be five days weather permitting. The lowest bid was direct traffic control for $27,273. Like I said, completion in five days, weather permitting. They've also asked if they could work at night to minimize the impact on traffic during the day, which we, you know, will allow that. Inspection on this project will be in-house. It'll be either myself or somebody in my traffic division. So, Public Works has recommended to take the lowest bid from direct traffic control in the sum of $27,273. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Garner, is that five days total for both intersections?
It's just one intersection.
One intersection.
Yeah, and that would be five days.
Five days total.
And then that would be weather permitting.
Okay. Any other counsel from, questions or discussion from counsel?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number nine.
Consider approval of best and lowest bid from Rarick Pacific Company in the amount of $46 each for the purchase of 700 residential refuse polycarts for a total of $32,200 for fiscal year 2020, 2021, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, so we certainly hope Mr. Stewart gets well soon, but Stephen Morton will come and address this one.
Thank you.
I do wish him well, but I don't mind, so.
Doing fine.
Thank you. This item is for our residential solid waste receptacles or polycarts. We currently use ReRig's product right now. They stand behind the product. They have an excellent warranty. And with the implementation of the new automated trucks, we have tested those trucks with these containers and they're gonna work just fine and they hold up to the daily wear and tear fairly well. And staff recommends approval and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What do we do with the containers that will be retired from use?
I do believe there's a buyback program on some of the containers.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council or do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number 10.
Consider approval to reject the sole bid from Slager Mechanical and authorize the rebidding of the Swim and Fitness Center natatorium HVAC system replacement project, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Mayor, I believe Kevin Anthes is on the phone to address this item.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, Mr. Anthes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the item states, we only received one bid on this bidding process. This one bid was well over budget and so would recommend that we review the, redo the bidding process and go back for, to get, receive lower bids.
When we redo the pro-
You have to answer any question.
I'm sorry. When we redo the process, we're not gonna be asking for any less to be done, are we?
No, we are not. After reviewing with a few other mechanical companies, there were several reasons from others that didn't get their bids in, in time. And so, I have received a notification from them that they are, are interested in the project and will be bidding should we reopen the project.
I only ask that question because I know it was so important to those users of that facility to be certain that we took care of that problem, to resolve other problems that it was causing. So, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
From the council? To reject this sole bid?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number 11.
Consider approval of the appointment of Hazel Wood to the City Facilities Board to serve a five-year term, filling the expired term of Delsey Lewis, beginning September 1, 2020 and ending August 31, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Counselist Stout?
Yes, I reached out to Ms. Lewis to see who she would like to recommend for, to replace her on the facilities board and she recommended Haiti. I actually have worked with Haiti for several years and she loves our community. You can find her at Robinson or Spalding picking up trash as she's walking her dogs. She just, we had a citizen complain about the grass on the sidewalks on one of the streets, on the sidewalks here downtown. She took them on herself and then came and weeded it one day. So, Haiti loves our community and I think she'll be a great asset to this board. I move for approval.
Second.
Any questions from council? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number 12.
Consider approval of the appointment of Counselor Evelyn Hibbs to the City of Muskogee Foundation Board to serve a two-year term, filling the expired term of Counselor Alex Reynolds, beginning September 1, 2020 and ending on August 31, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Counselist Stout?
Yes, this had to be a council appointment and Ms. Hibbs wanted to serve on the foundation board. So, I recommend her serving on the next two years for, on the foundation. Move for approval.
Second. Do we have any further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number 13.
Consider approval of the appointment of Perlin Boyada Craig to the Wellness Initiative Board to serve a four-year term, filling the expired term of Darrell Ventures, beginning September 1, 2020 and ending August 31, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Van?
Yeah, Ms. Boyadi Craig, I was talking to her about this board and she really, really wants to be on this board. She likes to exercise and I think she's fit like me. Just a joke. But I think she'd be a very great access to this board.
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion to put her on the board.
Second.
Motion in second. Counselor Van, we do believe in exercise and if you're so fit, I may need to go with you because I picked up weights since the campaign been over and it ain't working.
I'm just joking, Mayor. I'm just fronting. I'm just joking, I'm joking.
I'm trying to bait you into exercising. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Item number 14.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Taiwan Walker to the Wellness Initiative Board to serve a four-year term, beginning September 1, 2020 and ending August 31, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Hibbs?
I do not know Taiwan, but he has come with very high recommendations and I think this is a reappointment and they wanted him back on this board. So, I make the motion that we accept his.
Second.
I know Tai very good and he's an outstanding contributor to Muskogee. In any board he works on, he really, really works well.
I've heard nothing but good comments.
Outstanding gentleman. Further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. We have two citizens signed up to speak, three citizens signed up to speak on tonight. First is Ms. Doris Height. I'm gonna ask that if you're here, you'll come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and you will have three minutes. Height is not present. Stephen Ezel, you'll come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Dwayne Ezel. Address is sixty-one twenty-one South Sixth Street East. I am the current squad commander for the Sons of the American Legion, of American Legion Post fifteen. To preserve the memories and incidents of our associations in all wars. That is the very reason why the project that was started about three years ago exists, called Hot Dogs and Heroes, picnic and cemetery cleanup and restoration. Now, when we fir-, now, to recap, when we first started this, there were some services that were performed by the American Legion out at, like Green Hill or other places, where the grave sites of veterans had fallen into very grave disrepair and ruin, pardon the pun. Now, the basic idea was to try to go into these places, because many of these places do not necessarily have the manpower, monetary, or material resources necessary for perpetual upkeep and maintenance. One of those was the Graves', Graves' marker for our post's namesake, James H. Smith. When we first saw it, nearly three years ago, you couldn't even read it. But after we got various groups in, such as namely Muskogee High School or Junior ROTC, they were able to clean and restore nearly eleven hundred veterans' grave sites at Green Hill, and a few hundred more out of Booker T. Washington alone. This saved the city probably around twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in materials and manpower. Now, this year, we're gonna be holding our third annual Hot Dogs and Heroes Celebration. This year, it's going to be at Fort Gibson, the old historical fort itself. Yes, COVID-19, very serious, but we can't continue to live in fear. People want to get out, people want to do things. And here with me this evening is my counterpart, who will be explaining the more details of the event itself. But I will tell you this, Governor Kevin Stitt is so far behind this that he is actually proclaiming October to be Oklahoma Veterans Memorial and Grave Site Cleanup and Restoration Month. So I will now turn the floor over to my compatriot, Paul McKenstry. Paul?
The next resident that we have signed up to speak is Paul McKenstry. Will you approach the microphone, give us your name and address, and you will have three minutes?
Yes, thank you. My name is Paul Christopher McKenstry. I'm the historian for the American Legion Post here in town, and I've spoken to the council before over past situations that we've had as far as the picnic goes. Several things are occurring this year. We did not get a lot of support from the city in the past two years, so we moved the picnic outside of the city. I'm hoping to have the next picnic at the Batfish here in Muskogee, once it's been restored enough to where we can do this. As it stands of today, I've just been notified by the Civil War Reenactment Groups, they will be at the old fort, and they will perform a performance to include artillery fire and gunfire at the event. I've also been in contact with the U.S. Army Band out of Bustang, Oklahoma. They are sending twenty-five band members to participate in this event. I want this to be one of the biggest and best events we've seen in a long time. The reason for this is, is to perpetuate cleanup of cemeteries that have fallen into disrepair. I've spoken to Governor Stitt personally, and he has assured me that we would like to get Oklahoma behind it, and eventually I will put it into a national event. A lot of people here know the Girl Scout Cookies started here in Muskogee, Oklahoma, but a lot of people don't remember that, and how dare we not remember what started right here? I started this project two years ago, and I would like to get support from the city. The main reason I'm here is I would feel remiss if I didn't even inform our own city of what's going on in this kind of situation. The tiles this year, we are dedicating this year to the medical personnel who are helping us through COVID. I've already talked to the company that's producing the tiles. They would like to have the first photograph of a hospital in Oklahoma, which is located at the old fort, at Fort Gibson. It's an old black and white photo. We're gonna put a photo of the new hospital at the VA Medical Center, and there's going to be a medical helicopter evac, which is what I did when I was in the Army, to commemorate what people are doing to help us through this COVID crisis. Each year, the company provides a different plaque, and they all fit together into cohesive mosaic. So if you attend there, please see me. I'll be in uniform, maybe this one, maybe my Army uniform, and I'll try to make certain that y'all get one of the new tiles. And Mr. Coleman, you were at the first one, that's gonna look like nothing compared to this one.